Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merrimack School Board meeting for January 29, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I just want to acknowledge that our Chief Educational Officer, Mr. Olson, will not be joining us tonight as he is ill. So I know he's watching from home. So hi, Bill, from home. We will open up our meeting tonight with public participation. We ask that if you would like to speak to the board tonight, to please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And if you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. And the microphone is now open. And seeing nobody in the room, we will close public participation. And then move on to informational update. Do we have a superintendent update? I assume not.
We do not.
Okay, then we will move on to assistant superintendent update for curriculum.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to provide a quick update about the PD day we had on Friday. It was our last full PD day of the school year. And just like our previous days, we tried to provide differentiated learning opportunities for all of our staff. Just in case you're interested, we had some training from Envisions about our updated math program KDA six. And we had iReady training for all teachers in kindergarten through grade eight. NHLI was again on hand to provide some support as our work at the middle school and high school around PLCs and competencies. Our school counselors, SEL specialists, homeschool liaisons, and nurses received some training from Greater Nashville Mental Health and from the DOE. And our Unified Arts teachers met to discuss their curriculum and Edge Planet and to have some KDA six collaboration time. Our Title One team had a great training from Do the Math, which is a math intervention program that we're going to be using with students at the three lower elementaries as well as JMU's. Our paraprofessionals had training from 321 Impact on proactive behavior strategies. And they also had time with our new Assistant Director for Student Services, Bridget Perry. Our next PD day is a two-hour early release on March 29. And during that time, we'll be providing support and training around the district's migration to Google.
All right. Thanks, Amy. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business update.
Thank you very much. You may recall probably the end of October, I applied for the SAFE grant. There was $10 million awarded to a lot of districts out there who got on their website, the DOE website at 10:30 sharp and just banged it out and got it done. We were awarded around $300,000. We still don't have the money yet, so I haven't purchased any lock sets or security cameras. We are waiting for the governor and I guess the executive council to sign off on it. And I was told that is just a formality. And once that happens, I was told by the end of February, we should be awarded the grant and we can start the purchasing because with everything else, security cameras, lock sets, anything of that nature, there's usually a pretty long lead time to get that going. But we'll try and get it going as quickly as we can. I just wanted to keep you informed. Thank you.
I had a quick question. That's a federal grant?
Yeah, it's federal through the state is the sub. We're the sub.
Right, right, right. Okay, that makes sense with the executive committee. Okay.
All right, moving on to school board update. I realized I was talking to Sandy Swanson in our central office over the weekend, and I realized that I don't think we've ever formally recognized the fact that we've been minus a student rep for the last month or so. And I just wanted to acknowledge Sean Evidente, who had been working as our student rep since the spring of last year, had actually reached out and asked to step down as student rep, just citing time. So he's a very motivated student, works really hard on his classes and said he just didn't think he had the time anymore. So I just wanted to make sure the folks out there know we do have a vacancy for student representatives. So I believe they need to get in contact with Mr. Claire if they are interested in that. We'd love to have student voice up here and get some representation there. And I think that's it for school board update. Move on to the business at hand tonight and discuss the board's response to the 2024-2025 school budget, which is something we've been discussing pretty much the entire month of January. And I know our budget committee right now is eagerly awaiting this discussion so they can get to work with the numbers and start looking things over. So I can start here just by giving my thoughts on the budget as it stands right now. And throughout the entire process and month of January, I kept coming back to our goals, our priorities, which we've made, I think, pretty clear about. Two really big items for us are the Mesa contract and really making sure that we do right by our support staff. And then the new SAU building that we're very much making a priority for. If you saw the meeting last week, then you know why. And so with those two things in mind, looking at the requests and the stuff that has come in over the last couple of weeks, I do have some concerns with where the budget stands right now. And part of the discussion I was hoping to get out of tonight is to kind of see where we can find places to maybe scale it back. Having heard from our constituents quite a bit, we know that we've lost $74 million in commercial property value, which has affected tax rates quite a bit. I know we have all felt it up here on the board. And it's a tough time right now to ask for anything outside of critical needs. So where I'm standing right now is something I'm hoping to get out of this discussion tonight is to see where are the areas that we can scale back on. So that's where I'm at and be happy to open it up to anybody else.
Matt would like to say something before I.
Yes. Would you mind? Yeah, right now we're at $94,296,497, which is around 3.92% over last year's budget. Our default budget is $91,301,349. Let me explain how that's arrived at. So we take last year's budget, which is around $90,742,000. You start to remove items of a one-time nature or special warrant articles and items not likely to reoccur in a previous, in a future budget. So one of the items that we did remove is the roof at JMU's. That was 1.1 million. You know, we retired the middle school bond this year, so I can't still carry that in the default. That goes away. So that was around 793,000. We have benefits that went up 15.9%, 5.7 health insurance. That's around $1 million. Transportation contract, 5%. It's 132. Contracted salaries for our professional staff, 636. And special ed out-of-district placements and salaries that were voted on by a previous deliberative session and vote. That's around 600,000. And food service went up around 48,000. So when you tally that up, that gives you the 91,301,348 or 349, I should say. So that's where we're at. And a lot of times when we've had these discussions in the past, you know, because we're at 3.92%, the board has given the administration a directive, like they want to come in below 3% or something to that effect. Or they want to cut a particular dollar amount to get them below that. And then we've taken it back to our house and the leadership team and gone through the budget. And we've selected items that we think we can work with deferring until a future year. Everything in this budget is very important, but there are things that we could put off or things we could phase in over multiple years. So that's the end of my little speech to kind of help you along your way. You're more than welcome to dive into the nuts and bolts. Or if you want to just give us some sort of indication as to where you would like us to land, we can figure that out for you and go over what we come up with. So.
So let me share my thoughts. I believe that as a board working with administration, we've done a good job allowing you that freedom and responsibility to find those places. I mean, we all have an opinion of where we think, you know, changes could be made. But I really think that the best place for that to lie is with central office and the leadership team. So with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to cut $1 million from the proposed budget from $94,296,497 to $93,296,497 and allow administration to find where those cuts would go.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion. And can I explain why?
Yes.
I am an unashamed supporter of the Merrimack School District in every possible way. It's educated all of my children and I see the good that it does every day. After last week's meeting, I definitely, I mean, I've always been in support of the SAU building. But as a board member, you know, we have a responsibility to provide a safe, healthy workplace for all of our employees. And we have an obligation to do that as a board and as a community, I think. And so that, making sure we can have a central office building that is safe and healthy and fits the needs of our district is a huge priority for me this year. Also, a priority is to make sure that through our mediation process, that our Mesa contract addresses the needs that we have within our paraprofessional and our support staff and making sure that they have a fair and equitable contract. And once we, and I have great faith that that will be, you know, worked out and we will be able to have a contract put forth to the voters. Between those two things, I want to make sure that those things, two things pass and that the operating budget passes with the ability to improve educational outcomes. Our community has been very clear that they want to see educational improvement. And I think that our goals that we've worked on this summer have really helped the administration hone in on that. I think Amy, the work that you and all of the people on your team have done to make sure those educational improvements move forward is huge. And those, to me, are the things that are just not, you know, negotiable. However, I do think there's room in this budget to find what can wait one more year so that we can also meet our obligations to the taxpayers to make sure we're putting forth the best possible package, for lack of a better word, for them to vote on, right? We need this safe and healthy workplace for our administrators and our leaders. We need a safe, you know, we need the mess contract. We need, you know, the educational outcomes. And we trust you to go back and find the things that can wait a year. And we feel like this will hopefully allow us to put something in front of the voters where they can say we are on board as well. And that is the ultimate goal. And so that is why I absolutely agree with Lori that that seems like a reasonable amount to look at.
I want to add on to what Jenna is saying. One of the things that has been really exciting, especially working with Amy, are the changes in curriculum for the improvement of reading and math. And we're starting to see that iceberg get out of our way as we turn the ship. But those are investments that we have to make in curriculum. And they're large, one-time investments with smaller updates and things like that. And so for me, one of the priorities of things that I would be unwilling to see cut would be those curriculum investments. Those, I think, are so critical. And as Jenna said, our community has spoken very loudly about the test scores. And while test scores are not the only measure of success, they are part of it and it's something tangible. So I think one of the things that we need to understand is like last year's budget and this year's budget are making those investments into those curriculum changes. And that is going to increase the budget. I mean, we have inflation. We have those things, you know, the 15.9%, all of those things tacked on. But those investments into curriculum are not always going to be there. But I think that is one thing we need to point out does increase the budget and they're important.
I want to echo what both of you said. Having worked with all of you over the past two years, I feel like it's remarkable how aligned our priorities have been in that we really want what's best for everyone. We want what's best for our staff. We want what's best for our students and we want what's best for the community and the taxpayers. And sometimes there's a little bit of balancing that has to be done, which is, I think, what we're talking about here, where there are a lot of needs right now for the staff and for the students, and we need to balance that with the needs of the taxpayers. And I've been kind of thinking about two things when I've been thinking about the budget. Because a lot of times I hear folks who are really supportive of the schools, which is wonderful, and I don't want to discount that at all, who just like, but they're asking for it. Let's give them like everything they want. And I've been thinking, well, okay, how do I answer that? And I answer that with like, in my own life, when I'm budgeting for my own year, I have a list of all of the things I want to get to my goals of, you know, what I'd like my house to be like and what I want to provide for my family and my children. And I prioritize those throughout the year. And I go, you know, okay, this one is the most important. And in our case, I agree that most important is investing in safe spaces for our staff, fair compensation for our staff and curriculum for our student outcomes. So that kind of dovetails into why I like Lori's motion to let administration be the ones to decide, okay, what are those high priority areas? Because as a board, we set policy. We're not in the business of micromanaging what goes on inside the schools. Our superintendent and our assistant superintendent and all of our staff, our principals and our teachers are experts in their field. And I'm not about to begin to second judge that. I will, you know, oversee it as is my responsibility as a board member. But having watched this process and everything, you know, and having worked with you on our goals meeting in June, the goals are very clear and the administration has been working towards them very well. And I trust administration to see what's needed and like, like you said, what can be, what can wait a year?
Go ahead, Lori.
So I agree with everyone. You know, when you go through this budget process, especially, you know, most of us are educators. We are totally committed to the town of Merrimack and to the educational system in Merrimack. But we also know that there is a tipping point. And I think the board this year really felt and heard the community when they started talking about when they had an $800 to $1,000 tax increase and their big concerns. And we don't want to lose all the momentum that we have. We don't want to lose the trust that we've built with this community. So I think that's why we're asking for these cuts at this time.
Yep. And again, I will, I agree with all my fellow board members. And as a lifetime fervent, you know, very supportive of schools, I don't even like using the word necessarily cuts in schools in the same sentence. But in the situation that we're in, I always come back to the analogy of, you know, we have a leaky sink, but you know, the boiler just exploded. So we got to fix the boiler. And right now the boiler is the Mesa contract and the SAU building, which is literally broken. So we have a bunch of leaky sinks, little things here and there that can be improved and worked on. But right now I just think those two are the big ticket items. And again, the advancements we've made in curriculum are just so impressive. And as Lori said, we're just starting to see those results. And I think in the next few years that you're really going to notice where all of these investments have come into play. Nobody wants to take a step backward. Nobody wants to get rid of any of that progress, any of that momentum. We want to keep all those things going forward. So maybe for this year, keep that momentum going and then just look and see what other areas we can maybe, you know, scale back on a little bit. Yeah.
I just want to add one thing. In case anybody is just tuning into this one meeting and hasn't watched anything up to this point, I just want to say that we're not asking for these cuts because there was anything we thought was ridiculous or superfluous or over the top in this budget. That wasn't the case. You know, I think you all worked really hard to put forth a budget that represented things that, you know, we need to help move things forward. It's not about the fact that there's things in here that shouldn't be in here. The stuff that was in here was all really great and efforts to keep class sizes low, to provide more support, you know, through SEL interventionists, you know, new reading curriculum. Those, you know, roof was a roof on someone building. I can't have lost track which building it was. But, you know, I'm not saying these are the things we'll cut, but I'm just saying, I don't want anyone to tune in and think we're saying cut a million dollars because there was a swimming pool in the budget or something. Like, there's nothing like that, right? There's not even something remotely superfluous here. It's just holding all of these different things in these tensions, right? Like, we cannot, we have to do certain things. So and we have to say no to other things just right now. And it's not to say that that won't be in the future. But it's not, we're not asking for this because we think there's anything, I don't think there's anything ridiculous in the budget. It's just that we have to pare down to what we think is most essential this year so that we can get past the things that we really, really need to see rectified in our districts to really solidify the foundation so we can really move forward from here on out.
And I just want to stress the importance of people to come to the deliberative session. So whatever budget that we put forward that, you know, has been, I think, you know, a very thoughtful budget, that it doesn't get changed at deliberative session, you know, because we really wouldn't be able to afford that, right? So it's really important that people show up and understand that we did a lot of work at this table and we don't need anyone else doing any other work outside of this table.
March 4th, by the way, in case you're wondering. Yeah, 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM. March 4th. All right, call it to a vote. All those in favor, oh, I forgot all the wording. What's the wording? All those in favor of?
Reducing the proposed budget by $1 million from $94,296,497 to $93,296,497 with decisions made by administration.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes 500. All right. And so then Matt and our team takes this information back. They do their magic and then we'll.
That's right. And Amy and I will wrestle at the table for every last cent. I'm only kidding. And there are no swimming pools in this budget, but when we did the demolition, the demolition of Brentwood, we did find it in grounds pool. So.
Did you keep it?
No, we didn't keep it. So darn it. So.
I just want to thank you all for your very thoughtful comments and the trust that you have in our team. And we'll come back to you with, you know, some reasonable explanation for why we've made those decisions and just want to thank you for your partnership.
And just because I know there's probably some budget committee members waiting for this information, when do you anticipate getting us an updated number?
By the next meeting?
Next meeting. Sweet.
February 5th.
All right. You heard that, folks. February 5th. All right, moving on to high school football field scoreboard, which generated a lot of buzz this last couple of weeks. Yeah. And so I just want to first, and there was some credible concern when I had a few people reach out to me with, you know, oops, sorry, talking about Mesa contract and where is this money coming from and all, you know, a lot of information happening in a very kind of awkward time just because we're dealing with budget stuff. And so it was, timing wasn't great. But just going back to the actual conversation, the motion that was made was that the board would consider supplementing some of the costs if it came down to them needing a little push to get that over the line so that they could afford their plan. So there was never like a plan to give this organization a blank check to pay for this, whatever it ends up being. So I just want to make that clear right off the bat. Although, again, very credible concern of like, you know, making sure that we're not just doing that. So don't worry about that. That was never the plan. And even one step beyond that, I think we're going to be putting this project on pause for a little bit, Matt. Is that accurate?
Yeah, what we'd, would you like me to elaborate?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, yeah. What we'd, I've been talking to Sean Powers. Sean is a wonderful gentleman who came here and laid out his plan for fundraising and getting a really high-tech scoreboard, which would really kind of pull a little shine on Merrimack School District and the athletics program. That's going to take time to get all that money together. Everybody understands that. In the interim, however, we need a scoreboard that functions as a scoreboard as opposed to me and Amy walking around with number three or seven or touchdown, whatever. That'd be pretty good. Maybe we should do that, right? So we had, I talked to Sean about this and he's very agreeable that if we could take $45,000 from the $500,000 in retained surplus that we have, we could buy a board to replace the one that's there that would be functioning. And in the future, we could use that board, move it to a different location and integrate his more high-tech solution. So you would have both. So it's not spending money, then you're going to take the old one and get rid of it. It's going to be a supplement to the one that has the video streaming capabilities, et cetera. And so at that point in time, when they have the money raised, we could talk again about maybe doing another supplemental thing. But at least this gives us a scoreboard that if we get on order now, hopefully we can have it by the spring in the same location. Because I know there's a little bit of talk about that, too. If we move it from that location, then it's a whole nother ballgame, the whole nother cost. So.
Go ahead, Lori.
So first of all, I appreciate that. As many people know, I do serve on the NHIAA committee. And it is the school's obligation to make sure that the school is well-suited for athletic competitions. And so I think we have that obligation and I appreciate the work that you're doing. I really hate the idea that we have to put it there and I get it. It's just that when the sun comes in, it's hard to see. So that's why I was excited that we're going to have a more functional one. But it's fine. That's the best we can do. Like, we're all talking about how we're going to cut corners at this point in time. So.
Yeah, it's a compromise. Hopefully the lights will be a little bit brighter because that thing was probably, I don't know, 30 something years old. So maybe instead of just regular incandescent bulbs that'll glide on, there's LEDs and a little bit brighter and it'll help with the sun. But, you know, to do it that way, because the scoreboard, it did work for a little bit because we got fortunate. Somebody had some old parts in their truck and they came and they fixed it tentatively, but then it failed again. So this gets us a scoreboard. It doesn't get the big glitzy, not glitzy, but the big high-tech scoreboard that can be used for streaming and everything like that. But it's a first step that we can do to ensure that we have the minimum of what we need as far as athletics goes. We have to have a scoreboard.
You have to have a scoreboard.
And to take it out of the 500,000 and retain surplus, it's not hitting the budget at all.
And I just want to go back to something Ken said. It just wasn't really good timing. But we had a scoreboard for many, 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 many years. It's just that we kept fixing, you know, we fixed the broken sink, but we fixed it with used parts over and over and over again. So it just blew up on us.
And then when Sean comes back and then we work together to, it will be moved in another location. We already know the location, but I need a civil engineer to do a survey of what's underneath the ground as far as conduit, as far as pipes, as far as everything else goes. And then we have to erect a new steel chassis for the whole thing and then integrate it all in. So it'll be utilized again, but it'll be surrounded or it'll be on top or below the video board itself. So it's something that I think maybe may take a couple of years to get this done. But in the interim, we have a functioning scoreboard, which I think is important.
I was just going to sum up because I just wanted to make, because I heard from a bunch of people too after the last discussions about the scoreboard. So I just wanted to say really clearly what we're talking about doing here is replacing a scoreboard that does not work and has not worked for some time. We are replacing it in kind with a scoreboard that may be integrated into something larger one day, but is not.
but is not costing anymore than it's, it's an in-kind replacement of the scoreboard we have right now. We're not going big or anything like that, but it does have the capability so that if this dedicated group of outside people fundraises for us, they can, they can give us that amazing gift of a fancier one.
Yep. And I, I think too, just to clarify and correct me if I'm wrong. Did you say, Matt, if for some reason the one that we're looking at purchasing, kind of the bare bones one, if for some reason that doesn't work with the new one, we're going to use that in another location? Is that what?
No, it will work with the new one.
It will. Okay.
We've, we've, Sean and I have already talked with a couple of vendors and we're, they know what he's looking for. They know what the vision that he has for us. And the scoreboard that we're looking at procuring will integrate with what he's looking at. So we're just going to move the location so you can see it better.
Great.
So Matt, I know you've answered this before and you sent a wonderful detailed email, but for the public, can you remind us why we cannot retain the amount of surplus the town can? Where this 500,000 retained surplus comes from, from the warrant article that was voted on and why we can spend part of that on the scoreboard?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah. The couple of, a couple of years ago, we had a warrant article that gave the ability of the school district to retain up to 5% of their net assessment. So it's like, whatever your budget is, let's all the revenues, let us all the state aid, whatever you take 5% of that. And that's what you can retain at a maximum. For our rate for this year was like 3.1 million dollars. We chose to retain only 500,000. Just as this is, we're going through this the first time, let's not retain the three point because that would not have been a good move politically or any, and fiscally not, not, don't want to go there. So we retain, we retain the 500,000. We're looking to spend 45. So the balance, if we don't come back with another request, would go back into the general fund at the end of the year, would add to that existing surplus. And then we can retain a like amount or more if we choose to. Maybe we'll have a board discussion at that point in time about it. And then it can go on, you know, from year to year. But we can't retain more than the 3.1 million dollars, which is the 5% of our net assessment. The town, on the other hand, doesn't have really a limit. They have guidelines. So they can retain $8 million. In fact, I think that's what they have in retainage right now. They have a minimum, which I think is like 5%, which is like 2.1 million dollars. That's way too low. You know, when I used to work on the town side, I used to keep it like around seven or eight percent. So the town of Merrimack is doing a good job with what they're doing because when they retain their surplus, what they're doing actually is when they book a tax warrant, they send out all the bills. When times aren't good, and I've been through this back in the nineties, you collect, if you, if you have a warrant, a tax warrant, you collect around 75% of that. So now you're cash poor. This retaining of surplus for them allows them not to be in the position to take out a tax anticipation note. So when they, when they're going for a bond issue, it keeps their rating high because they never had to borrow money to get through the year. So it's a wise thing they're doing. I would do the same exact thing, but for us, we just don't have that capability. And we didn't have the capability until they changed the law of even retaining any surplus until like maybe four, five years ago. So that's basically how it all works. I know the mechanism, it's really simple in my mind. It's just hard to, to, to explain what happens.
Well, I think the thing a lot of people don't get too is that we can't like save up with that money.
No, you can't stack it.
It goes away at the end of the year. So it's like, we can't keep this $500,000 and, and hope to add to it next year and do something bigger and better. We're, we're not able to do that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah. I've talked with DRA several times. They've explained it to me because it is a little bit different than, than what it, what you do on the town side. But yeah, it, whatever's not spent goes back and then it populates the amount that we have for next year's surplus. And then we can retain all over again.
And, and I view stuff like this, which is really kind of a bare essential for that program. I think this is the kind of stuff the surplus is intended to be used for. Like this is the kind of things we want to use surplus for. And if any program that were in need of something replacing kind of last minute, like we didn't, I wasn't aware that the school board, scoreboard was an issue until it came up here. So those kinds of unexpected things that this to me is why that surplus exists. So. All right. Do we have a number that we're looking for or is this something we want to?
I'm looking for $45,000. So if we could have a motion, a second, I need that for the minutes. So I could show my auditors to prove to them that I actually went about this the correct way.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we support the high school scoreboard for $45,000 or 48,000?
45,000.
Okay. $48,000 to
45.
45, sorry. $45,000 to replace it. That's it.
Said some coming from the retained surplus.
Yes, from the surplus.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All, all those in favor of approving $45,000 from retained surplus to fix the scoreboard, say aye. Aye. Passes 500. Look forward to seeing that work done. Okay. Moving on to new business. Time to look at some warrant articles and take some votes here. I think we all got a packet. I had a packet. Uh, remind me, did we in the past kind of just read through these or did we all just take a minute to read them ourselves and then vote on them or?
In, in the past, we've, we've done it both ways. You know, I've, I've just summarized, you know, articles. Bless you. Our article two is for the construction of the new central office, 6.9 million dollars. Or I've read. So it doesn't matter.
We read it.
Yeah.
Couldn't, I got my data.
So we could summarize.
Cool. All right. Um, so, uh, let's see. Do you want to, want me to just run down, go through them here? Article one, to elect all necessary school district officers for the ensuing year. Um, article two, as Matt just said, is the operating budget. No, I'm sorry. That's the SAU building. My fault. And we will read all those at the deliberative session as well. Article three is pretty standard language in most school districts, which is authorizing and accepting gifts, legacies and financial gifts from community members. Article four is the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement, otherwise known as the Mesa contract, which we are still working on. I believe we have a mediation date coming up very soon here. And are being very, very optimistic that that will work out. Article five is to authorize the school board to call a special meeting in case. Uh, oh, article three cost, I'll just read it to you. Shall the district, if article four is defeated, authorize the school board to call one special meeting at its option to address article three cost items only. So that's going back to the accepting gifts on behalf of the district. Article six, shall the district raise and appropriate the sum of $790,000 for the purpose of roof replacement for James Mastrocola Elementary and the upper elementary? Uh, and then lastly, article seven, shall the district raise and appropriate as an operating budget? This is the budget. Uh, so we don't have that number just yet. Um, we will get an updated number next week. So maybe we don't vote on this one today, tonight.
Well, the motion was made for a million dollars.
Oh, okay.
The number is 93,296,497.
There you go. Make that change. All right. And everybody should have gotten a little spreadsheet in their packet as well. To, uh, for the deliberative session. So I figure we can vote on them. And then as we go, divvy up who's going to do the reading and the moving and presenting at the deliberative session.
Granted, after the bond hearing for article two next Monday, when you hear public input, you can at that, at that time, change your vote based upon any public input that you hear. So this doesn't lock you into anything. You can revote on any of these if, at any time.
That's very good to know. Okay. All right. So let's start with article two, taking a vote here. Shall the, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept article two as written.
I'll se- second it.
Second on behalf of Lori Rothaus. Discussion? All those in favor of article two as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 500. Article three, Merrimack School Board being authorized to accept gifts on behalf of the district.
Make a motion that we accept article three?
Second, second by Naomi. All those in, oh wait, discussion. All those in favor? 500. Thank you. Article four, the Mesa contract.
So I'll make a motion that we accept it with the to be determined amounts.
And I second it.
Second. Uh, discussion.
Does that mean that we just, we're, we're, we're agreeing with the way it's worded right now and that the amounts will be filled in later?
Yep. And as Matt said, we could, if for some reason we don't like what we see, we can always go back.
Cool.
Yeah. All right. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 500.
I will be happy to present that one at the deliberative session.
And I can second the article on that one. That's great.
Present. And second. Oh yeah. We forgot to do that.
Would you like me to do the SAU building?
Yeah. Do it.
I would like to second that one if I could.
Okay. So Jenna's going to do the SAU building. And second by Lori. Good question. Lori Rothaus. I'll go ahead and do gifts and property. I'll present that one.
That's for gifts of real property. Gifts of money we can already accept.
That's, I always accept that. Um, anyone want to second that one at the deliberative? All right. All right. The Mesa contract trailer. So this is a, for some reason that is voted down. School board can call that special meeting.
I can do that.
Lori's going to do that.
I'll make the motion that we accept it.
I will second that motion. Just, oh wait, you were talking about the deliberative session.
Yeah. So she was talking about the deliberative session. I'm making a motion that we accept article five as worded.
And I will second that.
I have a tiny edit.
Okay.
Um, I'm pretty sure it, at its option to address article, where it says article three cost times, it should say article four.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just boil because the, the bond has to go first, but the like, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, it was, yeah, I totally get why that happened. It's all good. I just wanted to make sure we noticed it.
Then I amend my motion, accepting the worded language with the amendment article four.
Okay. Lori amends. I will second that amended motion. Discussion? All those in favor of article five with the amended amendment? Say aye. 500. Um, and then I'm also happy to second that at the meeting unless somebody else wants.
Okay.
Lori's presenting it.
Lori Rothaus.
Yeah, Lori Rothaus. Anyone feeling passionate about that one? I can do it. All right.
Roof?
Uh, the roof, article six. And this has to be done by the budget committee? Is that?
No. No, I guess the roof. This is missing article six. Yeah. Article seven is the operating budget.
So like I, yeah. So you just have to bring it down. Yep.
All right. So let's do the roof first. Um, and then, um, okay. So all, do we have a motion to accept the language for article six? To fix our roof?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second? Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. 500. Who wants to present at the meeting?
I will.
Anybody wants to present at the meeting?
I'll second.
Here it is. And I'll go, I'll run down this list afterwards, just so we got all the names straight here. And then last but not least, article seven, which is the big one, uh, the budget.
Budget committee does that one.
Budget committee does that one.
But you have to vote on it if you want to.
We do have to vote on. Yeah. Yeah. So I will make a motion to accept the amended article seven with the new number of 90,300, oh, sorry, 90 million. That's a small budget.
93 million.
93 million?
296,497.
Oh, I was way off. 90, say that one more time, Jenna, please. 497. Cool. All right. I will rescind that motion and I will make a new motion to accept article seven with the amended total of 93,296,497.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. 500. Sounds good. Um, and at the meet, so they, you're saying the budget committee presents that one or?
Yes. Okay. At the deliberative session, the budget committee presents the budget warrant article.
Okay. So we don't need to divvy that one up?
Nope.
Sweet. All right. Uh, just to confirm and clarify, uh, going down who's doing what at the deliberative session. So for article two, I am presenting the article. Naomi is second. Uh, article three, Jenna will be presenting the article. Lori Rothaus will be the second. Article four, Lori Peters will present the article. Lori Rothaus will be the second. For article five, Lori Rothaus will present the article and I will be the second. And then for numbers, article six. Right? Yes. Article six. Naomi will present the article and Lori Peters will second.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, um, I have a question on the new central office. So would it be appropriate for when Jenna does the presentation on the new central office to show some of the video to take the PowerPoint that we created and go over all of the steps so that people in the audience see what we've been trying to present? And we have everything set up for her so she can do that.
Yeah, we can all.
I was just going to say, one of the most compelling events that I went to is for the water district MVD and their videos and PowerPoints explained their rate increases so great. And I was thinking about that after last year, that if we did that, plus the budget committee having, and I think Bill has talked about having a clear presentation on the budget, but I think pictures speak a thousand words.
Right. Right. So I just wanted, I just wanted, because I thought that we should be set up for that. And then, you know, we should plan on that.
And some, and some history too, because a lot of what I have been hearing is, well, why haven't, why weren't you looking into this option? And why aren't you looking into that option? And the reality is we have been looking into those options for years. And we just need to communicate that effectively to people.
Yeah. We have, we have looked at portables. We have looked at leasing space. We have looked at purchasing existing space. We have been in every nook and cranny of this, in this town to look for something that would be suitable for a central office. And we have found nothing that meets our needs here. Yeah. We actually looked at moving special services over to J Mews and having it in the old section of the building across from the police department. And that just created a, a building code havoc because kids couldn't cut through that hallway on the first and second floor because special ed was there. So they had to go around the entire building to get to the cafeteria. And plus there were dead end hallways, more than a hundred feet in a sprinkled building, which is not code. We have all that stuff. So we'll resurrect that and kind of polish it up. But there's been a lot of groundwork done over the years on this.
And I, and I'm sure that members of the planning and building committee will be at the deliberative session. And many of those people have been on the committee for 15 to 20 years and they know all the times that you looked at the old Shaw's Plaza, that we looked at the building that the NYA, like the YMCA, we, we've looked so many different places. And the amount of money to rehab a building was going to cost more than build a building. Even though, you know, we, we only brought it up for vote one time. And I think that's where people are saying like, how did you let this go for 13 years? And, um, that wasn't, there wasn't this board.
Yeah. And we looked at a building behind hot rise. Did you even know there was a building there? There's a building behind hot rise that we did look at.
No, we, no, I know. I was there.
You, you were there. Okay. Yeah. And we, we looked at where the village eatery is, that, that building before it was populated. We looked at that as an option also. So we've looked at a lot of real estate in this town.
And I think it's also important that we bring up to, to move all of those employees offsite. Now we're paying mileage and time because they have to go, you know, hither, thither and yond and, and between their buildings and all those things and having it on at least our central area of academic buildings eliminates a good portion of that. I also think it's important for people to understand that we have a legal requirement for confidentiality. I also think it's important for people to understand that we have a legal requirement for confidentiality. So we can't just have cubicles and open workplaces for a lot of these employees.
Great points, Lori.
And, and I just want to say one more thing. I think one thing that was really important that came out last week too was the conference room space um, being, you know, enough to fit the needs of our school district, but also the availability, the fact that it was going to be able to be used after hours for town things. Where there's a egregious lack of meeting space for town meetings. And we're trying, we're always trying, I mean, every time we try to do anything outside of our very ordinary routine, we're scrambling for where we're gonna meet and how we're gonna make it work. And we're not the only groups in town. Other groups in town are doing that as well. So that conference room will be something that will be open to be used, you know, not just for school day business.
Yeah, let me put it in perspective. That conference room is around fourteen hundred square feet. And I think maybe people have seen me count the tiles. These are two by two tiles. So if you do the math, this, this room right here, this is what you're talking about. This is around fourteen hundred square feet. So it's the same size. Just to give you perspective.
And there's nothing, and this is it, this, right now, this is it in this town.
Correct.
Another one of these would be a huge asset for various different.
Configured differently to allow for some flexibility. This is made for the town council.
Exactly.
You know, it's not made for the Budget Committee.
Right.
Right.
Um, and I, I think the presentation, anything visual at the deliberative session would be huge. I would encourage our, our friends over in the Budget Committee too when presenting the budget, you know, whatever you can do to do some kind of visual presentation. Um, I think it's gonna be huge. We, you know, we, we have, we have our budget heads out there who really pay attention to what's going on and we're very appreciative for those folks. But a lot of folks don't dig into the details and don't know all the nitty gritty stuff that we've discussed and how we've gotten to that point. So anything we can do to present that information in a, in a easy to digest way and a nice, easy visual way, I think will do wonders for sure. And that was one thing I noticed last year at my, my first deliberative session as a board member was just, we, we talked a lot. There was a lot of chat. Um, but you know, those things are easy to forget, you know, and I'm a visual person. So, um, so yeah, anything we can do for a presentation, uh, whether it's SAU or, or just the general operating budget, I think is a good idea.
And I think adding to that, what Matt said earlier, visually representing the parts of the budget that we have zero control over.
Yes.
Health insurance benefits, retirement, those pieces, the, the special education pieces that we have to have in the budget that go up every year. And we don't have any control over that. We can't cut it, we can't change it, and it's part of it. And I think understanding what parts of the budget are flexible and what are not helps if you can visually represent that and, and put those numbers up there, you know? The five point seven, the fifteen point nine, the five percent, the six hundred thirty-six K, all those numbers you gave us earlier tonight. These are things we're contractually obligated to have. It's helpful for people to see that.
Then when you add in, you know, we're required by statute for school approval to have a healthy, clean, safe school environment. Then you put in all, all the maintenance in there too, all the, the heats, the lights. So you can't have a school without lights or heat or anything like that. And it has to be clean and it has to be maintained. So once you start thinking a little bit further into it, a little bit deeper in it, you'll be surprised how little is really kind of left for discretionary purposes. It's always been that way.
And I, and I think that's one thing that gets overlooked a lot, especially for folks that maybe just aren't digging into the numbers, is so much of this is just basic operation, you know, we're, we're one of the largest employers in town. We employ several hundred people. We have to pay them a living wage, we give them benefits. Um, and so that's not free. And, and you know, the, the insurance rates are going up all across the state. Um, so there's so much of this that are, it's just out of our control. We just have no control over it. Um, and I, I think Bill said it at one of the meetings, like if you look at how much of it actually goes towards like funding actual education, most of it goes towards, you know, all of the, the list of things that we, we have to pay for. So, um, there's just not a ton of wiggle room. Uh, as Matt said, there's just not a ton of discretionary funds in there. And the, the numbers are out there. Go look them up. Go, if you find them, let us know because they're not in there. Um, all right.
Well, and one last thing, those wages, those wages and benefits, you know, we're in year two of a contract that was, that was approved by our voters. Right? So it's, that's something that the voters have already said yes to. Our, we value our teachers. This is important. They, you know, this is the package they deserve. They voted on it and we're in two, year two of meeting that obligation. And you know, obligation's a terrible word for that, but you know, it, it, that's, once it's in stone, it's an obligation and, and we're in year two of that. So that's, it's not like we can change that. We can't go back, we can't change that. So, um, that's, that's people, and the cost of benefits goes, has gone up, you know, this year. So all of that, I agree, has to be put on a slide because there are people who show up at the deliberative set, deliberative session and maybe have not, you know, watched every single meeting and really don't, you know, miss some of those key points. And, um, it is important that night to present all of those things.
And I would encourage people, go look at other district, every other school district's having this discussion right now. Go look at what everyone else is doing and you tell us how we stack up compared to those other districts, because we're right in line with many of them. We're not doing anything beyond what many of our neighbors are doing in terms of budget. So, um, I think that's an important thing for folks to remember. Cool. All right, any further discussion about deliberative session warrant articles? Moving on. Um, so review of two thousand ten Merrimack Athletic Fields Plan. This is not necessarily something we planned on discussing tonight. Mostly just to give the information to our board members and our admin. Because, um, one of the things that came out of not knowing the school, the scoreboard was broken was, hey, didn't we do a study on our athletic complex in two thousand ten? Um, where is that and where are we at with that? So, um, just to calm everybody down, this is not something we're planning on doing anything remotely close to this year with this budget. Um, but this is something because things take time and lots of discussion and planning needs to happen. Um, this is an opportunity to, um, give us a chance to kind of digest what has been done in the past with our athletics fields. Um, where can we see, um, areas in need? What could be improved? What can be changed? Um, and I know, um, Lori, you had mentioned something about.
So the, yeah, so I was just gonna say like, um, so I know on the capital improvement plan for the town council, they also have athletic fields in their capital improvement plan because it's not only a school need, it's a town need. You know, our town is growing. And, um, we, um, have a lot of kids who do a lot of different things. And so, uh, it's something that, you know, together, we probably need to form something together at some point in time.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
A few years back, I got real up close and cozy with this during a period of time in town. And I, uh, this is another example of a very well-done, comprehensive study that presented a glaring problem in our town, which is a lack of athletic fields. Um, which they pointed out, this was in two thousand ten. I don't think I'll be shocking anybody to say that that problem has not been solved, has actually only gotten worse since then. Um, so again, this isn't, again, in the spirit of we're not moving forward with anything right now that isn't a dire emergency. This is not, you know, I mean, this will need to be addressed at some point, but this is not on the agenda to talk, talk about right now. But, um, Matt, I assume this was put out with the board, um, you know, supplemental information to the, out, it's been put out to the public, yes? So that they could review this? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's online.
Yeah, because people should take a look because anybody who has a student per, uh, participating in any kind of athletics in town is, is very aware of this problem, even if only at an anecdotal level. Then you read this and you realize that this was done in two thousand ten, this problem was brought forth in two thousand ten. And everybody agreed, wow, that's a big problem. And then they, some, I don't, and I'm not privy to who, what, where, how that all went down, but somehow this just got put side on the side and we, and nobody did anything? Unfortunately, another problem that they, has been kicked down the road. I don't, again, I do not think that is, this is exclusively a school district problem. This is a town problem. Because the M Y A is probably, is the biggest user of the fields. Even our schools don't use the fields maybe as much as the M Y A. Um, however, just for informational purposes only, to inform yourselves, it's a really interesting read if you are someone who is interested in athletics in this town in any way.
The thing is, I mean, this, this committee was created in two thousand seven and it had such a broad base to it. I mean, Shannon Barnes was on the school board, was on there, Terry Benhart from M Y A. You know, Emily Colburn, former board member, Keith Ickey, town manager. Um, you know, Tom Nutting, Mike Melzone, Jim, Tim Tenhav, anything that's associated with Tim Tenhav has done well. And I can see Tim Tenhav's paw prints all over this thing because this is really a comprehensive plan. It took three years to do this.
It's a break guy.
And I think it's brilliant.
Um, so again, this is really just to bring it, bring the light back on it because it's been such a while since it was discussed. Um, I do think it would be worthwhile to maybe consider this for our summer goal-setting meeting to, you know, take a look at this between now and then. Um, and see if there's anything, um, you know, in conjunction with the town council, um, that we can do to improve the situation.
The town council and the M Y A, I think that's the thing I learned several years back is that we really have tough conversations with this about the people who run the M Y A. Because they need to be part of the solution and everybody who cares about Merrimack Athletic Field and who uses them needs to be around a table to brainstorm how we are all going to collectively look at and then develop a plan for solving that problem.
Um, I've been sitting on the Parks and Recreation Committee and there's a member of the M Y A on that committee as well. And I, I don't think they've talked about it recently, but, um, I remember a couple of my first meetings that athletic fields were, that were high on everybody's priority list of what are we gonna do about that? Because there's a lot of concern because they're using, um, it's not called Kohlsmann anymore, Elbit. They're using this, with like soccer and stuff, they're using the fields by Elbit. And if Elbit all of a sudden decides, nope, we can't let you use those, they're just like out of luck for fields. So this is definitely a need. I would be very curious like, um, what's changed since this report? Because I was leafing through it and I saw a plan to like maybe use some property that used to belong to the Y M C A by Horseshoe Pond that now has housing on it. Um, so, so yeah, I think it's definitely worth revisiting and seeing where we are and what's changed.
Just a quick summary of what has changed. What has changed is a lot of the available field space they said was a solution in here is now gone. So.
I would just also add that, um, we have to get Tom Tussaud on this. Because he knows, like, anytime somebody says, why can't we use this or why can't we change that? Or why can't we do this up at the middle school? Or why are the fields not open? He knows the history, he knows what's under the ground, he knows everything about every field the school owns. And he knows what can and cannot be done. And unfortunately, we have some spaces that on the surface look like they would be great for a field, but they're not. And he knows why. And I have appreciated every time I have called him with a constituent question, he has been able to answer it.
All right, um, further discussion? All right, any other new business? Moving on to approval of minutes for January second, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'd be happy to make a motion to accept.
Jenna makes a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Lori seconds, discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes for January second, two thousand twenty-four, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero zero. Moving on to public and non-public minutes for January eighth's meeting. We had so many meetings in January.
Budget.
Still, still going. Uh, do we have a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes for the January eighth?
So moved.
So moved, we have a second, second by Lori Rothaus, uh, all those in, oh, discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero for approving the minutes for January eighth. And last but not least, um, the public meeting minutes from January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. This was the meeting with the Planning and Building Committee and the Ad-Hoc Committee. So we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second by Lori Rothaus, uh, discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for January twenty-second?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, one, four zero one. All right, moving on to consent agenda.
There is one resignation in your packet tonight. Uh, James Harvell has resigned his position at Merrimack High School as of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
All right, do we have a motion to accept Mr. Harvell's resignation?
So moved.
Second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Do we have any?
I do. So my committee report would have to do with the, um, Planning and Building Committee, a joint meeting with the school board, which was televised. But I just want to say, um, I really deeply appreciate the feedback we got from ad hoc members who came and gave us a critical look at the questions that people might be asking in the community about the central office and, and the need for central office. I thought that it was a really great, um, joint meeting, um, for getting the word out. I, I really appreciated that, um, we had, you know, a number of really, um, solid citizens come in and really support and also give us information.
Go ahead, Naomi.
I have been to many Budget Committee meetings, uh, over the past month. They're in the, basically doing a similar process to what we did, um, where they're, uh, having presentations from different departments uh, come in and go over the budget in great detail. Um, it's actually been really interesting. They've come up with a lot of the same questions we have, but also some different ones. And there was something else I was gonna say about that. Uh, oh, and they also do like, um, site visits with each, like they'll have a subgroup, a subcommittee go to say the high school and see the facility and talk to administration. And that committee will present at these, at these information gathering meetings. And then there's an opportunity for other members of the committee to ask more questions. So they've been doing a really deep dive into the budget. Um, they're anxiously awaiting our recommended updates because, um, I believe their work session for uh, determining the final budget is the sixth, which is the day after our next meeting. So, uh, so I would love to have something to present to them about what we've decided. And I will, at the meeting tomorrow night, say, you know, we've, we, this, we've, we voted that we think it needs to be lower by a million dollars and this is why, and this is why we've delegated that task to administration. And that's pretty much it.
All right. Um, I had a, I was unfortunately not able to attend the most recent professional development meeting, uh, due to a school commitment. And then the Curriculum and Instruction Committee gets snowed out a couple of weeks ago. So, um, there's a couple of those coming up in the next few weeks in February. So I'll be, I'll come back with those reports once they happen. Um, any other committee reports? Correspondents, um, I did get a few emails about the scoreboard, um, had a few phone calls about the scoreboard. Um, and, um, had some discussion with folks about clarifying some things and where our priorities are. So, um, hopefully, hopefully that went well. I think it went well. So, any other correspondence?
I had the same kind of correspondence, plus, um, some questions regarding paying off the bond in the middle school. And some, um, received a lot of opinions on a lot of these issues. So it's, it's helpful to see that the town is paying attention. And they are, um, voicing their opinions, which is very important for us to hear.
Very true.
And I just had a correspondent and I just sent them back through the chain of command.
Uh, comments from the board? We're all commenting, you know, when you meet every week for, you know, there's so many comments made. Um, speaking of comments, um, public comments on agenda items. If you wish to speak on any of the agenda items tonight, we ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And if you are a student, no need to state your address, just your name. Moving on, there is no one here. So we will close public comments on agenda items. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? See everybody next week.
And next week already.